That be added to the agenda. One of the, both of their memorandums of understanding, their developers agreements, operations and maintenance agreement, and their financial security. So I'm seeking action from the board to allow that to be added to the agenda as an action item.
And this would normally be something that would be in our consent agenda on normal.
That is correct.
Yes.
So what's the will of the board? We have a, basically the motion is to add this to the agenda.
Could I ask why it isn't on, on the consent agenda? John, can you tell me why it's not on the consent agenda?
Timing. We did not get the agreements, financial security, in time for the solicitor or the engineer to complete their full review. The solicitor was able to complete her review on Friday, and we received a request Monday to add it to the agenda. So we've been diligently working to try and accommodate both the township's requirements and the developer's needs.
I mean, normally, this is a routine action. I understand that. I do see them on both documents. There are exhibits, exhibit pages that are not, don't provide any exhibits. Is there more information going to be provided?
The interesting thing with this is that staff would ask that the board make a motion to approve the agreements based on final approval from the township solicitor, staff, and the engineer.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Ben to have a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
All right, the ayes have it five nothing. So we will add that as an action item. Guess it'll be action item number I now.
Actually, do have it listed as item A. If that helps.
Got it, okay. So it'll be first on our agenda then. So next up, we have the consent agenda. The purpose of the consent agenda is to approve routine items that usually require very little debate or discussion. So open up the consent agenda to the board. Seeing no issues, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Ben to have a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it five nothing. Okay, now we're back up to our action items. And the first thing is the action item of the item we just add to the agenda. It's Lime Springs. It's addition to the agenda.
Diane, can you hear us?
Yes, John, I can hear you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, again, do, in the Lime Spring Developers Agreement, there's reference to Site Unit Number One and Site Unit Number Two. Number One and Number Two. But there's no, I don't see any information here that I, I can, that'll help me understand what, what they're really trying to do here, other than, other than split the one lot into two, making one residential and one commercial.
And Mr. Beck?
Mrs. Schenk is on the Zoom call. She might be able to assist.
You know, and again, there's, there's exhibit sheets attached here, and there's nothing, nothing on it. And I guess, again, should there be? For us to really understand what's going on here? I would say yes.
Okay.
Is this pressing or anything?
As Mrs. Switzer said, I believe Claudia is on the Zoom call, and she can, she could probably update board members better than Cindy and I could.
Yeah, sorry about that. I was having trouble coming off of mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
So, you know, as you noted, there's two separate developers agreements. Basically, what we're asking to do is to separate the amount of the financial security so that, you know, this, this subdivision plan, it subdivides two properties that are now subject to a site condo, or a single property that's now subject to a site condo. A part of it will be developed commercially, and a part will be developed residentially. So there's a separate letter of credit for each part of the development. You know, we, we have asked that, that this would be approved, subject to review by the solicitor and the engineer, as the amount of the financial security. The reason for that is we are finally in a position with this project, after a long time, to be able to record the plan and, and close on the transaction. And we're attempting to move forward and do that. So we did ask, on a very short turnaround, staff to assist us in getting this on the agenda for this evening. And, you know, we're very appreciative of everything that they've done and that, that your solicitor has done to make that possible. But that's why we're asking you to take action on this tonight, again, subject to final approval by your solicitor and your engineer before the agreements are released.
Did she hear Tom's question?
I did not.
About the exhibits?
On, on, on both agreements, there's a exhibit page. There is nothing listed on the exhibit page, should there be. And she would be concerned if there's not something there.
The exhibit would be the opinion of probable cost, and those are still being reviewed by Scott. That's why they're not attached yet.
Copying David Miller Associates, correct?
Correct, correct.
All I can say is, in the past, when I've been in this situation, the motion typically, and I'll read it to you, is the motion to add, let's see here, the motion is to, I've got to scramble to put this together, to approve the memorandum of understanding, the operation and maintenance agreement, and financial security for Lime Springs Village, subject to fully satisfying the comments of township staff and township solicitor. So that would be the, the motion at this point, if we want to move forward as a board. And you're saying this is being tied to closing? Is that what you're saying, Mrs. Schenk?
That's correct.
What's the comfort level of staff at this point?
We did have Mrs. Pfeiffer look at it. She was comfortable with that motion that you just read. Mr. Haynes does have the cost of probable.
Opinion of probable.
Thank you. He does that, have that in hand. He just not, has not had the opportunity to look at it fully. And before we actually put that attachment in, we wanted to make sure that he was comfortable with it. This is an accommodation for this developer, which our attorney and engineer are comfortable with.
So essentially, it's just he has to review the amount that will be posted as escrow, or the amount of the bond, or?
Correct.
Letter of credit.
In fact, we will hold the documents until that is done.
I mean, for me, I'm comfortable with it. If there's, I guess, an issue with the board, I just want to hear where everybody else is.
I'm just not comfortable approving something with, not, and not knowing really what I'm, what, what we're being asked to approve. That's, that's my concern.
Weaver? Let's really hear.
I'm kind of on the fence. I mean, I'm not really familiar with this project, so I don't really have a whole lot to say about it. I would like to see plans or something to, or, you know, something a little more substantial than what we have.
For the residential component off of Marriott Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Between the railroad and Marriott Avenue.
Correct.
Did we already approve the plan?
You did.
Okay, so the plan has been approved. So basically, we're talking about, in other words, they have to file the plan that we approved, and they're waiting on the O and M agreement and the financial security. And the exhibit that you're referring to would be for the financial security, correct?
Correct.
That amount has been produced. It's just our engineer has not a chance, has not had a chance to review it and sign off on it.
Correct.
But based on the motion, he will have an opportunity to review it and sign off on it, correct? I guess the issue is at hand, we don't get to see what that is. Okay.
We're deferring it to staff.
Correct.
Would two more weeks till that could all be put in a full package be a problem? That we could address it at our next meeting?
Mrs. Schenk?
Yeah, I mean, our hope would be to, to close the day after your next meeting, so we wouldn't have time to record the plan if that were the case. And certainly, the township is not, you know, is under no obligation to accommodate us in this regard. This is, you know, something that we're asking to allow us to proceed.
I mean, the way, the one way I look is, we've never challenged one of our engineers reviews yet of one of these security agreements. We've always had our engineer review it, comment on, and put it together. And that's really the only thing that's not in this package.
I'm considering the history with this applicant in East Hemphill Township to consider the request. It's not my preference, though. I like things complete also. But I might be persuaded somewhat because of the nature of Lime Springs' history with East Hemphill Township.
Like I said, it's not something, under normal circumstances, for one of these security agreements, we don't, as a board, that's not the level that we do a review. We, that's what we have our township staff for, to prepare and make sure that there's a adequate number of dollars reserved, should the township have to take over and complete the public works. So, but I understand people's issues too, because it's not completely documented.
To move this forward, I'll support it. Do you need a motion? Can we go?
If you could, the motion, again, would be, we stated again, the motion is to approve the memorandum of understanding, Developers Agreement, Operation and Maintenance Agreement, and the Financial Security for Lime Springs Village, subject to fully satisfying the comments of staff and solicitor.
So moved.
Hey, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
No.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have it with one, no. Okay, next up, we have Amos Hur Park Changes, and it's what most of the people in the room here are here for tonight. And I am, is, the first one is the pickleball court and basketball court, the color coat and reline, authorized to move forward with expenditure of under $7,500 to color coat and reline this McAdam area. Ms. Switzer, do you want to first talk about what's on the agenda here?
So Diane, if you could put the map up, we could show you what we're talking about. The pickleball courts were created in 2014. There are three courts on existing McAdam, along with a basketball court. They need resurfacing, recolor coating, and relining. And what we propose to do is remove the volleyball poles, which no one plays any longer, and move those courts to the backside of that McAdams area, and adding the three courts back there. If we take action tonight, the contractor that we have to do the work will be able to get the work done, probably within the next couple of weeks. Wrong one. I think it says alternates. So because we are changing where the pickleball courts are, we are bringing this before the board supervisors to get permission to do so, since you gave permission to the original, the board did, in 2014, to put the courts closer to the, the front, or the, the path. And the bottom one, of course, is how it exists now. The lines are that faint on the pickleball court, you can't see them. But they currently play in that, that blank area below the volleyball courts. And there's actually lined for four courts. One is lined across the volleyball court now, but that will be removed.
Okay, so that's the recommendation? That's what we're taking action tonight?
It was discussed by the Park and Rec Committee. We met with pickleball players, we met with the property owner, and it's a recommendation of the Park and Rec Committee to do this plan.
Okay, and then I understand there's two groups that are here that want to speak tonight, one being the Gonzalez family, and then the Pickleboards, Pickleball Association. So what we're going to do is, we're going to allow the Gonzaleses to go first and give them five minutes to speak, and then the pickleball will have three minutes to speak after that. And then we're going to talk about it as a board. So, does Mr. Gonzalez get the force yours?
Mr. Gonzalez, I did share the, go ahead. I, I did share the video with the board, as well as your attachments, so they're familiar.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Um, in your, let me introduce myself. My name is Fabian Gonzalez. Along with me today, this evening, is my wife, Mary. This is what you mentioned, we are the, the property owners to the south side of the existing basketball and volleyball courts. In your opening comments, just, we'll need to clarify, but I just wanted to elaborate a little bit, the changes that were proposed back in 2014, for the existing volleyball courts to a pickleball setup. I kind of disagree with that statement and, on that volleyball courts were never used. We've boarded that property now for the past 20 years. We have a full, everyday visual of what kind of occurs every day in, in the park, and the activities and so forth. So I know for a fact, what we know knowledge-wise is that the volleyball courts have, are being used on occasion. I know the Hemphill High School sometimes bring the students over, those, the, the, the students that play volleyball, I've seen coaches there, kind of giving instructions, things of that nature. There have been past summers, on occasion, there's a large, I'm thinking it's a Mennonite or an Amish community, they always get together as a big family thing going on. They play baseball, they set up, they play volleyball, and all that thing. So I kind of disagree in the opening comments that the volleyball court never gets used. We understand it was repurposed and, and decided upon to convert it into a pickleball court back in 2014. Unfortunately, my wife and I were not here doing that action item when, when that decision was made. So, again, that's just, that's just my comments on, on the initial statement. So I kind of, kind of disagree with that statement, and I just want to clarify, since we have a firsthand look at exactly what goes on, on a day-to-day basis, more so my wife now, because she's home continuously now, so, and even on weekends, we kind of, kind of see what's going on. Like I said, we've been residents of both West Hemphill and East Hemphill Township for the past 20 years. As I mentioned, we live right around the, the property that borders on the action item that we're talking about. I do apologize if I jump around a little bit. I know my time is limited. Just want to convey some, some comments and some concerns that we have with the proposed changes that's presented to the board this evening. But from a human perspective, compassion on the board, and members of the community, that you kind of hear us out, with all politics aside, we have a deep concern as to what, what the proposed changes are going to impact directly to us, not so much the gameplay itself, but there's an issue, and it's a national issue. We didn't know this was an issue till I done extensive research into the actual sport itself. I didn't even know what pickleball was until, you know, the activities start, start happening. We, we take issue with, with the, the equipment that's used to play the game. I'm not sure if the board is familiar. It's a hard ball. It looks like a, like a wiffle ball, if everyone's familiar with the, what a wiffle ball looks like, and when it comes in contact with the paddle. Not the individuals who complete the action, but it's the actual sound, attenuation of the sound, that's actually causing a health issue, specifically my wife. I'll elaborate on that a little bit. But the message I want to start out with is, and I think it's very important. The noise caused when the pickleball comes in contact with the paddle itself, I, I want to talk about that and, and the ill effects that it has on us. But I want to make it perfectly clear. Pickleball players, to the clubs, to the rec, we don't take any exceptions for the actual game of play. Nor do we have ill feelings, disrespect for those who play this game. The issue at hand is the actual noise that is created during the game of play. Property lines that are proposed, and where, where you saw on, on the layout, are about 58 feet from the edge of the court, our property line. What's proposed is to move that, provide some relief, another 50 or so feet. It only gives us another 100 feet. There are studies, I have information, I think I emailed to Cindy, those, those recommendations. There's companies that actually come out and do a sound attenuations, they do site studies. The minimum, from what I read, this is a fact, I'm not making this stuff up, the minimum of 300 to 500 feet from any residential property line, mitigate any complaints, issues with local residents. Unfortunately, in our case, we're the only ones that this really has a direct impact to, because we're the only ones that border the current situation. Again, we have new feelings against the game of play, the individuals who play the sport, it's the actual noise itself that, that, that occurs during the play. My wife suffers from a disorder, mental disorder. Not proud to announce that, because it's very private, bringing up some private things here, called misophonia. Not sure if you're aware of what that is. Misophonia is a disorder where people have abnormally strong and negative reactions to ordinary sounds. We invited members, Switzer, Officer Skiles, police officers that have been to my property last weekend, they experienced firsthand of what this sound actually, what we're experiencing. So, again, it's, it's not the gameplay, it's the, the sound itself. So, again, it's not the gameplay, it's the sound itself. So, I just want everyone to be aware. I go to work every day now, worrying my wife's going to have a mental breakdown, nervous breakdown, but that's where we are. You know, I'm waiting for that phone call. I took off work this week, this week, Monday, because there's a large group that comes, yet they want to exercise, they want to play a game, they want to have a good time. So do we. We want our quality of life back. We want to be able to sit in our backyard, four hours of the day, seven days a week, to enjoy the peace and tranquility of what we've experienced for the past 20 years. I'm waiting the day that I get a phone call, and my wife is actually picked up and driven to my place of employment, that is Penn Medicine in Lancaster City. Now, this is not only impacting her directly, but now it's impacting me because obviously we're all concerned about our loved ones, and I don't want to get that phone call. I got better things to do. I think, I'm hoping with compassion, that the board would take into consideration of deferring the decision tonight and kind of looking into some more, you know, all the studies, all the requirements, possibly and hopefully, take pause on any future gameplay on the existing setup today. The reason I say that is because there's four other venues within our community that pickleball game can play. They have Spooky Nook, they have Fairview, they have Bookmiller, I'm not sure what the other one was. The rec, the rec center, both outdoor and indoor courts. There are 17 total courts within our community that gameplay can be played, so it isn't like they're losing a location where they can play. Ms. Switzer, I kind of jumped ahead, there's a video, I believe.
We have it queued, Diane.
It's a YouTube video, and what you're going to see is, some of the equipment that they use, I mentioned earlier that they use a hard ball, but there's actually another ball that you can use that doesn't make the loud tick, what I describe as a tick-tock noise, it's more conducive to what you would hear when you're playing a game of tennis. This study was done, I think it was in Arizona or someplace. So what you're going to hear is, they're going to get into the different, the balls that they use, and then they're going, your firsthand going to hear the actual ball that they use, and then they're going to do a test on the softer ball, if you will, during the gameplay, so.
Okay, so is this, if your presentation now at this point, because you're, I bet, 10 minutes.
I'm sorry, if I can yield some more time, I apologize.
Well, we'll watch the video, but then I need to give the other side a chance to talk to, so.
Sure, absolutely.
We got the video queued up, and actually, I wanted to play the video anyways, that was, you were going to do that anyways.
Add time in the end, then the traditional comment, or?
We will see. Let's see how, how the board delivers, so.
Sean Kreiderman, President, Saddle Brook Pickleball Association. We're here today, Friday, February 13th, at approximately 11:05 a.m. to film and get the audio and visual of our brand-new, yellow, soft Onyx Ball and the regular, always-used plastic wiffle pickleball. You'll be seeing in a moment a demonstration of both the regular ball and the new Onyx Ball.
All right, dude, the sound test was done during the average of normal play, which ran 72 to 78 decibels. However, when the ball was hit hard, it ran from 84 to 90 decibels. This is at the center of the court. Standing in the center of the court, next to the net on the outside edge, I measured the ambient noise of 49 to 51 decibels. When the people were playing, the average noise during the normal play was 54 to 60 decibels, with a high of being between 64 to 68 when the ball was hit extremely hard. When the court next to this court was played on, I measured on average play, 51 decibels with a high of 60 decibels. The far court, which is two courts away, the best reading I could get on the high was 54 decibels. The low was drowned out with the ambient noise, and there were some birds chirping, and that drowned out the rest of the noise, so I couldn't get a true reading for, during normal play.
Diane, you can, you can discontinue it.
I'll try to wrap up. I know I exceeded my time here, I appreciate that. So, again, as you saw in the video, and in the beginning, you heard the loudness, this is what we're experiencing every day of the week, seven days a week. So there's some options that we kind of presented, possibly relocating play to tennis courts, flip-flopping to tennis court over to the volleyball court. Again, there's expense involved to that. Something else, other things that we need to consider is the time of play, maybe limited to three or four, three days a week, certain times a day, or certain amount of hours a day, and no weekends, at least we can have at least some sensibility or some quality of life. And this is, this is a game to others, it's not the game itself, it's the noise that's impacting my wife because of mental health issues and so forth, and it's imposing on our quality of life. So we're just asking the board to please, I sent some more information on studies and things that need to be for abatement and mitigation processes, please take into consideration, and I ask the board to kind of defer on any decision this evening. Maybe we can continue this at another time, allow more time to have some more dialogue as to maybe what solutions or what options that we have going in the future. So for the time being, just ask, you know, pause play or what have you based on the information I've provided you. And again, I want to appreciate your time, I know I've exceeded, I thank you for that. Thank you for the board listening to us, and also Officer Skiles and his guys, I don't think the police department has enough recognition that they deserve in our community as well. So, and we support them 100, 100%. And thank you for your time, and hopefully we take these items into consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Gonzalez? Is there anybody from the pickleball court group that wishes to speak?
Well, thank you for letting us come and talk at the meeting. My name is Tom Klingon. I live at 2859 Mimosa Lane, which is Spring Valley. I'm one of five other people who are here from the Hemfield Pickleball Club. There's 23 people zooming, and guessing we probably have some other members that they were going to zoom out, to be able to see and hear. With the chairman's permission, we do have a total of six people here, and it says we talk up to three minutes.
I gave the other side about 15 minutes, I'll give you guys 10, okay?
I was just going, except one other person was going to do most of the talking, if that's okay.
Yeah, I can, we'll give you more than three, to be fair.
Pickleball is one of the fastest-growing sports, if not the fastest-growing sport in the United States, and this is a very disappointing day for many of us who play pickleball in East Hemfield Township, that we need to be here to defend playing pickleball at Aher Park, a park that is a great community asset. Just as a quick background, we approached the township in 2014. Anybody here play pickleball?
Racquetball, not the same thing, I guess.
All right. And the township graciously agreed to take the lines for the current space. In fact, in 2015, added a fourth court because of the popularity of pickleball. We formed the Hemfield Pickleball Club in 2014, organized how we were playing. Since 2014, we've had a total of 70 members in our club. This year, we have 43 members in the club, including 10 new members. And we do have the courts reserved Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So the question is, how many people are taking advantage of Aher Park to play pickleball in our community, which is a public park? We know that there's at least one other group that plays, they have approximately 25 members. There are individuals we know or hear about who come and play at other times at their discretion. For example, six weeks ago, we drove by, and there was a family out playing pickleball, husband, wife, and two children. They had their own net, they had their own balls, they were out taking advantage of Aher Park. So, you know, there is an objection raised about using our township park to play pickleball because of the noise. So I think we'd like to just sort of say, what's really happening? Well, first, the reason we're playing where we are is that's what the township recommended. We originally proposed, but that we were told by Robert Crimmell at that time, well, come over here, we have a better idea. Park, township agreed to paint lines. Unfortunately, when you live next to a park, there's going to be noise. And there's, in our opinion, no way to get around that. There was a full-court basketball game being played Sunday at Aher Park, five, 10, probably total of 15 people. The sound of that ball hitting the rim, bouncing over the metal rim, hitting the backboard, was constant for two hours. What if someone objects to playing basketball? Another example would be driving in tonight, there's three soccer fields full of kids. If I had a home that backed up to the soccer field, quarter of seven, and I want to relax and calm down, outside yelling and cheering, live next to a park where sports are played, there's going to be noise. I mean, we could go on and talk about every sport. One of our members belongs to a tennis club in Delaware, and neighbors complained about the sound of the tennis racket hitting the tennis ball. That's what happens in our feeling when you live next to a court. Steve Mumal, the retired athletic director from Hemfield High School, and he's just going to share two other quick examples of what happens when you live next to a play.
My name is Steve Mumal, 1801 Risher Lane, Lancaster, out here at the, I'll pass the new building going on out here. The two things that I wanted to bring to mind were, the conditions when I was there when we first put in the new stadium, the lights had to be higher than what they normally were. Township granted us that ability to do that. Those lights actually shined so brightly, all the neighbors were, you know, concerned of how that would affect their lives, et cetera. However, the township went ahead and we did that, and we could still, we lived over close to Columbia, up on the hillside there, we could see the lights that far away, but still went ahead and did it, and later still have those lights. The other concern that was brought to our attention was the band. Anything, you can hear the band in Solanga if the wind is right. But, you know, again, with all the kids involved, et cetera, that again was, never done anything about it, and it still continues to this day, of course, to make the sound, and the people living right there in the railroad tracks, et cetera, as well as the tennis courts being right there, also make, makes both of those things.
Pickleball courts are built, are located in the middle of many communities all over the United States. That's the fact of the matter. All types of locations, some local examples here, Tradition of America and Lititz, pickleball courts in the heart of their houses all around it. Village Grand in East Hemfield, houses located. Down the Bookmiller Park, county park just south of Lancaster City, are houses located near the park. It's just how the park has the area of pickleball. I don't know that we have time to address the ball that was recommended.
Actually, if you could address that, the softball versus the hardball, that'd be a pretty.
Nobody plays with that ball. We have pickleball members that play in the senior games, play at other locations around the county, play in Florida over the winter, play all over the United States. No one plays with that ball. It would be the equivalent today of asking a hardball baseball player to play with a Nerf ball. That is the difference. It's just not the standard ball. Yeah, maybe quieter, but it's not the standard ball that is being paid all over the United States to play pickleball. States to play pickleball. Now, the second thing is, now, I'm not a doctor, and I'm not a mental health expert, but it it just, what's the reaction been from the neighbor who is adjoining to the pickleball courts? And I think you need to know this. Speakers have been placed at the edge of their property, facing directly out basketball courts we're playing, or the basketball team playing there on Sunday. The volume is cranked up to a very, very high level, a continuous loop of hard metal music. Some of the lyrics, and it plays over and over again, as long as we're playing pickleball, some of the lyrics includes very offensive language, and some even includes the F-bomb. We reported that to the Hemfield Police. Reason why the Hemfield Police were at the home on this Sunday, those of us who were trying to enjoy a Sunday morning of pickleball, there was just four of us, decided we didn't have to be subject to the F-bomb and hard metal music being played out. That's been the solution, us playing pickleball. There have been several people who are walking on the new trail path that has been created in Aher Park. They have stopped and asked us, what is going on with this noise? You can only imagine if there were kids playing basketball, kids walking along the park, having to be subject to this loud, offensive. Now, Sunday, after the police showed up, because we we did file a complaint, we were told by the officer that they find that music to be soothing. It also gives us headaches. We don't think that enjoying Aher Park, playing a sport that is so popular and keeps growing all over the country, that the township has graciously agreed to provide facilities that we need to be subject to that abuse. I have tinnitus, which is constant ringing in my ear. Right now, I have ringing going on in my ear. So, what do I do to help address that? I use a white noise, try to camouflage the sound. If the homeowner is objecting to the noise, the pickleball club would love for the homeowner to take speakers, take them away from the edge of the property, and don't blast them out towards us to disrupt us playing pickleball, put the speakers objectionable, and use music to camouflage the sound of pickleball. Now, the other item I just want to mention, and I'm almost finished, is when we're playing pickleball, the noise on Harrisburg Pike, trucks go by, or the garbage truck goes by, loud, to the point where when we're playing pickleball, we can't hear the opponent giving the score because there's too much noise. So, we'll say, just wait a second, let the truck pass. That noise is 24/7, all the time when Harrisburg Pike. But yet, us playing pickleball seems to be a major issue. So, in closing, we have close to 100 people taking advantage of the help of providing pickleball courts at Aher Park. Many of us sort of feel that, Jesus, that we have the right to be able to be here. 99% of our players, and that's a guesstimate, are retired or senior citizens. The medical community would be elated that us old people, our senior citizens, are out there getting exercise. Without pickleball, we wouldn't be getting it. Have people play pickleball, but when they're late 80s, and one gentleman was 90. COVID-19, being outdoors to play a sport. And the last point I'd like to make is, we don't play pickleball 24/7. Five months of the year, well, there's no pickleball at all being played. If it's raining, there's no pickleball being played. If it's very, very hot, many people don't play pickleball. So, we've been doing this since 2014, and now, pickleball is a problem. So, we we thank you for the opportunity to share with you what's happening at Aher Park regarding this popular game that's called pickleball. Want to thank the supervisors and the township's willingness, guard pickleball.
Gonzalez, I'll give you one minute. You said you want to rebut. Nah, nah. I'll get, I'll get three minutes. Okay.
Okay, my name is Terry Gonzalez. We live at 543 Main Street. We have no issues with pickleball playing delayed at Aher Park. However, it does have a major impact on our quality of life and has effects on my mental health and well-being on a daily basis. The location of these courts does not comply with the definition of the Parks and Rules Regulation Number 183.3A, which reads, "Structures, equipment, and facilities owned by the township in parks and parks and public property are to be used in an appropriate fashion for the activities for which they were designed and intended." The volleyball courts were not intended for pickleball play due to the proximity and the residential, to the residential property and the lack of a sound barrier. We have provided Mr. Weaver, Mr. Bennett, as well as Cindy, with recommended pickleball guidelines for pickleball courts. To our knowledge, no sound studies were conducted back when permission was granted in 2014. A sound study should have been conducted to evaluate the effects this would have on local residents. The township proposes to move a court a mere 50 feet, which will not solve the sound emission issue. We propose that the courts are moved to one of the underutilized tennis courts. The players have a place to play within the park, and the noise issue is alleviated on our property, not to mention the tax savings, as a sound barrier would not be needed. The surface would not have to be recoded. It would merely cost you to repaint lines on the tennis courts. Back in 2014, it was a minimal cost of 700, less than $700. They play here seven days a week. There are 17 pickleball courts within a nine-mile radius of this park. The players have other options. We live here, and these courts are in the current location, causing us mental anguish and impeding on our quality of life. We cannot move, even if we wanted to. This would also cause us a financial hardship when we cannot sell our property with a pickleball court 100 feet from our property line. Understand, when we bought our house, it was a volleyball court, not a pickleball court. It wasn't an issue until now, because I am home all the time now. I was at work during the day up until this year. Try, imagine trying to enjoy your private backyard, listening to this sound for hours every day, six months out of the year, months that you want to be outside doing gardening or enjoying a cup of coffee in your sunroom. I cannot even open my windows and need to have the TV or radio on inside my home to drown out the noise and the sound. I'm a prisoner in my own home. We're only asking for pickleball to be moved to one of the underutilized tennis courts. I ask all of you the same question. Would you want this sound in your backyard? And this is a tape, a video, from inside my sunroom today, and I don't know if you're going to be able to hear it.
Put it next to the microphone when you get it going.
This is inside my home, for hours every day. The window is open, yes. So, this is a small example of the sound. You're only listening to it for 15 or 20 seconds. I am listening to it for hours upon hours a day. So, I would ask, do you want this, would you want this sound in your backyard when the the township and the board has a chance to move this somewhere else within the park? Please keep your answer in mind when you cast your vote to let this remain in the current location. Your vote is determining our quality of life. You took an oath to ensure and protect the quality of life in East Hemfield, for East Hemfield Township residents. Thank you.
Okay, we'll open this up to the board for discussion. I'll turn it over to Park and Rec first, as you guys have been discussing it longer.
One thing I did notice in the video was with the softballs, if there was two empty courts, it did drop the sound down to ambient noise of 49 to 15, 49 to 59 decibels. So, that's basically about 50 feet, I believe. Two courts of 20 feet plus the space between the courts. So, that's basically what we're trying to do here, is to move, you know, the present court's 50 feet, which is equivalent to a distance of two side-by-side courts. And there was definitely a noticeable drop in the sound, and that's using the softball, obviously. But I think it will definitely help to do that. I mean, it's not going to totally get rid of the sound, but it's, you can see from the video that it definitely does have an impact. So, that was what Mr. Bennett and I were able to come up with for now, and that's just my, something I just saw tonight, and thank you.
Well, I agree with what Andy said. You know, we believe that the reasonable first step in this, in trying to address this situation and mitigate it somewhat, was to move the tennis courts, or not move the tennis courts, but move the pickleball court 54 or 50 feet away from the property line. Given the fact that we were going to repair the cracks and recoat the surfaces on both the basketball and the volleyball courts, you know, we decided this was a good first step. We don't know, with all due respect, we don't know that moving the courts won't improve the the situation at this point. But again, we feel that it's, it's a good first step. It's a good faith gesture on the part of the board, on the part of the township, in trying to address the situation that you're experiencing.
Now, for the pickleball group, when do you stop play as one of mine's come up? When do you typically stop play? Have one, you said just about six months a year or so?
Well, we usually play through the end of our year. Temperature, but but keep in mind, we're here just representing several that do, but the other group has already gone inside. Try to play outdoors.
Got a question for him. Sir, I had one question for you. I think I heard from the other party where they stand on what the Park and Rec is recommending. Where are you guys on what they're recommending? Are you okay with it? Do you have a problem with it?
Mr. Klingon, if you could speak up, too. They can't hear you on Zoom, close to the microphone, possibly.
Had a chance to meet with Parks and Rec. Our first request was an indoor.
I'm sorry, Mr. Klingon, they can't hear you on Zoom.
Okay.
If you could speak closer.
Our first request was a indoor dome. But we were quickly told that at least currently, that's not in the budget. We, we would love to see Park, a new pickleball facility that would emulate what is Book Miller Park down just south of the city, and someday go down there. It is the best pickleball facility outdoors in Lancaster County. That would be our dream. But that dream is down the road. Short term, we think it's a great solution to move courts further away from the house. We're also giving up a court. Township painted four courts originally, and now it's going down to three. Courts. So, yes, we were, we were very pleased with that first step, with the dream of someday having a new pickleball facility located. Ironically, we sort of both came up with the same spot in the park, but that's down the road.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussions of the board?
Yes. Address this as a pickleball court, pickleball group. We have a group that meets in this township that plays bocce, and that group has financed and funded their own facilities here in the park. Has the pickleball club considered participating in funding of a relocation, new pickleball location in the park?
I'm sorry, you're going to have to speak through the microphone. Thank you. And if you could identify yourself first.
Sandy Mumal, 1801 Rissler Lane, Lancaster. Unlike Spooky Nook, who charges a fee for play or a membership, and unlike Lititz Rec or even Hemfield Rec, which requires a fee for membership to play, we do not have that financial goal. We are trying to enable as many residents to participate in outdoor play here at Aher Park. We have a $1, $1 per year fee, which we do use to help us to replace our own pickleballs and, that we purchase and our nets. So, we don't have the financial means to support something like that. Now, we are taxpayers, so of course, we, in essence, do help to give something back to the community, and we are ever so grateful for the opportunity to play here at Aher Park. Also mentioned was the, about playing in other locations. We are residents of East Hemfield Township, the majority of us. As Tom mentioned before, there was only that 1% perhaps that were not East Hemfield residents. So, for us to travel to other locations to play, in some respects, is really not feasible. And as Tom has mentioned also, some of our participants are And as Tom has mentioned also, some of our participants are senior citizens. They are up in age. I want to share with you that I had a car accident. I taught in the Hemfield School District for 30 years. I had a car accident, had to take from, time from work and go through speech pathology, speech, physical therapy, speech therapy, occupational therapy. And I also had PTSD. And to complicate that matter, our son was killed in a car accident a year later. So I also developed, beside the anxiety, I also developed depression. We found pickleball. I can't tell you how that has changed my life. In a physical sense, it has really been a healing power. In an emotional, psychological sense, it has been a healing power. Just the socialization alone from the support of those players, as well as the constant movement and opportunity to work through some of the pain. It's a great pain management opportunity for me. And these are things that were suggested by my therapist, and I've had therapists for years. So for us to lose pickleball in any sense of the word, just is not acceptable for me either. I look forward to this. It's healing for me. And it is for so many of us who are senior citizens. The COVID has impacted many of our lives. I'm sure it's impacted all of yours as well. The opportunity to be outside. When I look at what I believe is a mission statement for Aher Park, I, I can't help but think that part of that has to reflect the opportunity to impact the health and safety and well-being of its citizens. I find the overall goals of this park, the maintenance, the care with which this park is maintained, I, I, I'm just impressed. I'm impressed by it. I feel very sorry for what these residents are going through. And I realize that their lives have value, they have merit. And if there is a way to, that we can work together to solve the situation, we're all for it. But we are willing to make consensus, consensus. We love the first step. Sure, our ultimate goal would be to have something further removed, something that's in keeping with the standards of pickleball in terms of not just the facility, but also the equipment. But we do not have the means. And it was never our goal to make money. It was never our goal to be a financial institution of any kind. Our goal is simply to take care of the health, safety, and well-being of our community. So I hope that answers the question a little long way around.
You've answered it at great length. We, as a board, have the consideration from the 23,000 residents of this township when we make expenditures. So that is why I asked the question as to why your group might not be able to help in a significant addition that benefits your group directly. Thank you.
I think at this point, we've heard enough comments from everybody. I understand this is a emotional situation for everybody. It sounds like our Park and Rec working group has come up at least with a first step. It's a compromise and it's not probably what anybody in the room wants because obviously pickleball group would like to have a new court, which is not something that we have the financial means nor, right now with the COVID impacting our budget, nor do we have the finance in place. We have to actually put money towards roads and bridges and other infrastructure first before we put into Park and Rec facilities. I think leaving it where it is, is, if we can move it at least further away, it's at least a good first step to trying to address some of the concerns that have been raised tonight. I know it's not, I'll give you thirty, one, one, one real quick comment.
Mr. Gonzalez, you'll have to speak in the microphone.
So the video we watched, it showed the levels of decibels going down by, because of the distance. But you also took notice in the video that there was sound attenuation. There was a fence with sound fabric that actually helped that because the gentleman that was taking the readings was actually court side. So again, it's, it's a smart first, first step. I'm not too hopeful that it's going to mitigate because the equipment's, the same equipment's still going to be used. But there's no sound attenuation. I understand we're not going to put up a fence. We're only going to do resurfacing and repairs of the existing court. Now, when we discussed it a few weeks ago, we, we had discussed about putting some sort of a sound attenuation, a fence with some sound fabric. Again, good first step. But I'm confident, I'm very confident, it's not going to work because you don't have that sound, that sound.
I appreciate that. But we do have a first step before us at this point. I think we've heard all the issues. I think we're aware of what the concerns are from the community from both sides in this one. So right now we have the motion, and I'm going to read it, is to authorize removal of the volleyball poles and courts to recolor and red, reline the entire McAdonner one basketball court in its current location, replacing the volleyball courts with three line pickleball courts. So that is the motion. And I'd like somebody from the Park and Recs group to make the motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Weaver, a second from Mr. Bennett. Mrs. White, sir, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. The ayes have a five and nothing. To see how his first step goes. Next up on Aher Park is the community garden authorization to move forward and secure a G7 general permit to install a small bridge. I wouldn't use the word bridge, to install a small culvert to cross an additional, into our additional park lands or relocate the community gardens. I'll start off with this discussion because this was brought up in, in Public Works. And the concern was raised by Public Safety about unfettered access around our township building. At the time, the discussion was about putting a fence up. And both myself and I, I don't necessarily, necessarily speak for Mr. Lefever, but both of us had concerns about, I'm not sorry, it was, it was the one, it was Mr. Bennett was the one that we had discussion with. It wasn't Public Works, it was Finance and Admin. We had concerns about the bunker mentality, as well as would that really solve anything? And the biggest concern was, while we are introducing residents back behind the township facilities, back behind our public works facilities, because that's where the community garden is. And we thought that this would be a good first step to addressing some of the concerns that our police department has by actually moving that location to a more suitable location so that we're not having residents drive behind our buildings and behind our public works facility in order to access the community gardens. So what you have before you is a proposal to do that and do it in such a way that next spring during the planning season, this would be in place. It would be locating to, from the upper left corner, which would be our northwest corner, down to the lower right corner, which would be our southeast corner. And we have our stream restoration that we had done along there. We had talked about not actually adding additional parking spaces at this point. I don't think we need to add more impervious to our location, but basically just putting across. Mr. Bennett, I don't know if you want to add to that.
Well, I'd add two comments. First of all, relocating it to the proposed area of, we're relocating it onto, onto what previously, as I understand it, has been farmland. So we think the, the growing will be better there. That's, that's number one. And then number two, moving it will also give us an opportunity to take a look at our signage around our, our current buildings in places where we can restrict access. Or, you know, we just don't want people wandering around the, particularly the police facility that we have.
That's what we have before everybody today. So we, we thought the best, the first thing we could do is address causing residents to actually go in places that they really shouldn't have to go to in order to get to these community gardens. So that's what this, this proposal is here for. So I don't know if there's any questions of the board about what's being proposed at this point.
Is there risk of stormwater flooding at this new location?
The low point is actually part of the, the drive. Possibly Perry could more explain that better. The actual field area where the, where the gardens would be is, is higher than the crossing is.
Do we know the FEMA lines in that location? Because I know that there is a wetland very close adjacent to the township property.
That would be part of the permitting process. We would not be allowed to put this in wetlands or in the under your flood.
Understand that.
So they would, they would, as part of it, they, David Miller would have to locate those things and ensure that what we're proposing would be outside that in order to get the permit.
Other, other thing is if it's under square mile drainage, FEMA doesn't map it. So they would, they would have to create drain floodlines, but it's probably not a square mile there. So it's probably not in a FEMA flood zone, but that doesn't mean it's not going to flood.
And my concern would be the jeopardy to the crops of the folks who work so hard to create them. What is the closest vehicle access to this? I'm unsure from a small map how close people could get their vehicles to manage their produce.
If you see the red line going from the existing gravel parking lot to where the gardens are, there would not necessarily be parking per se. And right now, the gardeners that are doing the other side actually drive around the field area or the grass area and park. There's no parking there either.
I've actually observed it because I went with my son playing baseball with my wife and I walk there a couple of times a week right now in Aher Park. And basically what the residents do is they just drive up and they go to their area of where the, the location is and they just park their vehicle at that location. They get out, they do their work, they do some watering, they hop back in and they leave.
Okay.
The watering method would be the same. We currently now have a, a container that we put out there and fill it routinely. That'll just be put over to the other area and routinely filled.
If I may add, we, the, the area that was farmed back there for years, I don't believe per se that has ever flooded, flooded. It does get wet. It's not swampland or anything like that. It was used for crops for years. The only part that, that may overtop very, very little would be the actual bridge itself. And we would mow the grass around it like we do at the current location so that people would have place to park back there. As was stated earlier, people drive through the field and park in the grass to do what they currently do. But that particular area, we would mow it in a more, you know, on a weekly basis like we did the current location.
Okay, thank you.
Again, this was really more to address a public safety concern that Chief had brought up. And this is a first step. And we're hopeful with this and signs that we can alleviate some of the concerns that was raised. Seeing them were board discussion and is there any of you in the community that would like to discuss this? And non, I entertain a motion. Motion to support, or motion to authorize staff and engineer to move forward to secure a GP7 DEP permit to install a culvert to cross the small stream on east side at Aher Park to allow access to an area for the relocation of the community gardens.
So moved.
And a second from the chair. Mrs. White, sir, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. Lefever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye. The ayes have a five and nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, sorry for, because we have the macro cell tower discussion. It's from the Recreation Authority. And here tonight from Liberty Towers is Michael Hoff, is that Hoff? Okay. Seeking board support to move forward. And we're going to be talking about the macro tower, as well as many in the ground lease, sublease and concession agreement, but the towers first, so four is yours.
Diane, if, Diane, if you could put up the map that shows the distances, that would help orient the board. But go ahead, mister.
Certainly. My name is Rich Lemanowitz. I do represent Liberty Towers. And we have been in some preliminary discussions with Four Seasons Golf Club about a lease agreement to develop the community. Bottom property, of course, you know, property is leased to Four Seasons Golf Club and we require board support not only for development on the property, but ultimately your ground lease agreement. Our purpose for being here tonight is to talk about here we propose development of the tower. Very support to moving forward with the commercial. Green, there are two proposed locations. Proposed location one, I believe, is everyone's preference. It's closest to Nistley Road. 528 feet closest residence. Also set in an appropriate location where it would ultimately fill our tenants gap in communication coverage. Verizon Wireless are focused more centrally around the proposed who's further up her field. It's back further away from other homes, but does not necessarily fulfill our goal in providing reliable Verizon wireless.
Could you, I got, I kind of like location number two more than location one from a, of impact perspective. Can you show me the aerials or the, the visuals for proposed location number one? I guess Diane.
Diane, those should be in the, in the file.
No, I mean, that's okay. While she's getting that up.
I think that's location number two.
Yeah, location two is the Nistley Road track.
Our location one was the Nistley Road track. Location two was the North River track.
One is Nistley Road.
No, this, this would be for Verizon. Has there been any interest in any other carriers also co-locating at this point?
So the tower will be able to accommodate other users. Initially though, out of the ground, it's intended for Verizon Wireless.
Okay. And would it, how would this, in terms of 5G rollout, how would, how would this work for that?
So their equipment, Verizon Wireless, would be capable of providing 5G services.
Would this take away some of the need for Verizon to put macro cells in like Mill Creek, Indian Springs there immediately around where just cell towers are?
Our, our understanding is this will help alleviate small cells.
Will it be hidden or?
Stealth.
Yes.
Right now, it's intended to be either a monopole or a lattice tower. Our experience with the stealth alternatives, primarily at Creek, they ultimately stand out more than the tower would. We are in the very preliminary stages of this. Assuming we gain your support with a lease, into a lease with Four Seasons Golf Club, you'll need to go through zoning process. But at the moment, no plan to help it.
Could I, could I ask that we see the additional photographs of the site?
The additional photographs?
Well, three, in other words, on this document that we were provided, there's a overview of the, let's say 10,000 foot overview. And then there's a, a picture of the tower itself, how it would appear on the golf course, what it would look like from a, a couple of different angles.
Diane, if you could pull up the LTPA Centerville 170 pole, monopole A in the presentation folder. Is that the one you're looking for?
Yeah.
And then the aerials follow that.
There.
That's location one.
That's
That's Nistley Road, right. Now, do we have the photograph that I sent you today?
Diane, could you pull up the other photograph? From Mr. Bennett? You're challenging us tonight.
My, my question with the photograph is how likely is the tower to look like the photo I'm going to show you versus this photo that's here? In the discussion that we had at the rec meeting, you, I thought you did indicate that there would be more than one provider on the, on the tower.
The photo you see.
Only one, right. Right. And I just want to, again, in the interest of giving everybody an idea of what they're actually going to get, now this is a, this is a tower up in Reading and the power lines aside. How likely is we're going to get something like this versus the one that's depicted in the original? Is, is there four people on this tower? Probably.
Looks like there are four different providers, tenants on that tower with the top of that tower not being used. By anyone, so each array.
Right.
Likelihood that our work proposal looks like that. There are four potential tenants that could use this tower right now. Just one. Feel like needs for. Not the best example of what a tower could look like.
No, I understand. That's, that's why I, this, this is what we, in my mind, what we want to try to avoid. Right. Okay.
And one thing I do look as a positive is if this kind of prevents or help reduce the likelihood. Of small cells gone into underground, pounds into developments that are all underground at this point, which is what Indian Springs and. Mill Creek has. I think those residents, since especially considering I'm one of them. Would probably be more favorable to having a large. Cell tower than having a bunch of small monopoles going through all of our developments, so. I, I don't know if I'm necessarily averse to having a pole that's got four hookups if that's the alternative to having macro, micro cells in place.
Just for my clarification, so that pole. You think is over a hundred and seventy foot? Hard to judge. And I'm thinking.
I think it is, just, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, yeah.
Mr. Hoff, you'll have to speak into the microphones. Sorry, they can't hear you on Zoom. And we have two if you want to share.
Well, this is also a high tension tower pole and as Rich said, it's, it's not managed during telecom standpoint. There were four tenants on the tower were proposing. You would have one at the top and. Carrier below that would be ten feet below. Top forty feet of the pole. Where this has four tenants. Fifty or sixty feet. Don't have things uniform. So. I standpoint, probably. Looks like it's probably in the same.
And our current wireless ordinance right now tops out at one fifty, so we need. Some type of a variance or special.
One twenty five.
One twenty five, okay. Yeah, okay.
So in addition to your support tonight, they would also be looking for your support when they go to the zoning hearing board.
And my, my preference still would be site two over site one. I mean, we have a, we have basically the most impacted land is all public land. It's basically surrounded by public land with the sod farm there on the one side and the golf course on the other side. And a thousand feet spacing to the nearest resident, which would be, that would be my preference between the two sites. The, what the Nolte Road site.
Can we go back and take a look?
Proposed site number two.
I, I think if you plus the other.
Right.
And doesn't, from Nistley Road, isn't that a dip as well? So you're going, there is a natural.
Right, okay.
Diane, I did add that second location.
One is closer to central to.
What was the authorities discussions at this point when you guys met to talk about this?
I think consensus was, we agreed with Verizon on the, on the Nistley Road location. You know, we, we did have the, the same question that you, you raise or that was raised about. The, the tower height, you know, and then, or the, not only the tower height, but the, the height of the, the land itself, the elevation. The elevations, you know, when we first looked at it, we thought that Nistley Road elevation would be much, much lower, but as we, as it was examined and, and analyzed. They're very, very similar and the, the, again, the, the tower really. On the sod farm, the tower really sticks out, you know, from just about every, every view, every angle. Where it's a lot less. Noticeable in the, on the, on the Nistley Road. And I think some of that has to do with, with obviously all the, all the trees that's around.
Other discussion of the board.
I had a, I'm not sure if you mentioned this, but how high is the tower?
Simulated photograph is provided for a one hundred and seventy foot tall tower.
Okay, and I'm, I'm thinking from a land development point of view, if, I think it's likely that either, both of those will probably be developed at some point. And so that is going to put a setback on the tower, if I'm not mistaken. Is it a one for one setback?
Oh, the, the Nolte Road track is parks. That's, that's not planned for development.
As location one?
Yeah, so that, or location two. That's planned for additional sports fields and other things in the, in the distant future right now.
I thought at one point we were considering location one might end up. Going to development.
Nistley Road track is owned residential. It's not so, it's not so like the rest of the golf course. The golf course and the sod farm have the same zoning recommendation along. They're back at this point.
Which properties?
The sod farm.
It's recreational.
It's recreational where Nistley Road track is residential zone.
Yes, it is.
The, Nistley Road track was the one that the township contemplated selling in two thousand and ten.
Remember something to that effect.
Correctly the date of it, so. And then it got pulled for a couple of different reasons, one of which was the offer price that the township got at the time. When the housing market quickly imploded. There is some thought that that possibly being a good location in the future. For a consolidated fire department or some other use of, for public lands. I wouldn't necessarily say that one's. Guaranteed to be residential development at this point either at this, so, but then the sod farm in particular is planned, is actually planned parkland at this point. Just happens to be, being farmed.
All right, well then that would kind of push towards location two. I was, I was just thinking, you know, when we're picking a location that. Potential development, potential should be something to consider too. But if the turf farm is going to stay where, you know, zoned as, as it is, then that kind of points to location two.
What, what is the minimum setback? Hypothetically, we were to sell this road track. What is the minimum setback for a house now?
John, what is the minimum?
I'm, I'm looking at it.
Okay, he's looking.
I think too, though, as a practical matter, I think there was a big outcry from. The residents at that point, we've had significant development. Since then. Both commercial and residential. It's ground that the township owns. I mean, I just don't ever see us. Selling it at this point. I just don't see the board having the will to do that. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe there'll be a future board that does want it developed, but I see it more or less used. We have some stormwater issues. Maybe added to open space, parks and rec sometime down the road, but.
Speaking of, on the stormwater side, where did we propose that basin at the time? Is that anywhere near where, where cell tower one's proposed to?
That basin was proposed on the Nistley Road track. The cell tower is on the golf course track, no?
The basin was proposed on the golf course track, not on the Nistley Road track.
Okay, then, then it was proposed, if you pull up that one print, it shows kind of rough grass. The cell tower is proposed at the edge of that, that.
There was a, I can't remember who did, I think it was actually.
You're right, yeah.
Yeah, there was, there was a sketch of a, a basin that we had done under Mark Seivers.
Yes. That lighter part green, I think it was in that area. And that the point where the cell tower is located, technically it's actually on the, it's right on that edge. Of where the, the rough is, I guess you call it, and the. We want to see location one, I think, no? No?
If, if we are going, if we are considering location one, then we, we should at least know where we are looking at putting a basin and not put the cell tower in the basin.
Yeah, so it's at the very edge of that, that area. Perry, can you help me out?
He's muted.
Sorry, I was trying to unmute. The location was that lighter grass area there. And I think it encompassed pretty much of that. You know, that area.
Would that be something, when you take a look at, you can see how we could design a basin in that area too, or revise our design that we, that we had come up with, that design's probably. Get ten years old at this point.
Certainly.
Yeah, we'll pull that out.
Increase to the location and the concept of the. Or with engineers going, we'd be glad to take a look at.
Yeah, we have, we have some pretty significant flooding downstream as well as through the golf course and that was looked at putting an upper, basin on the upper end to. Basically for flood control was, was being proposed at the time. We're on board at this point. We are looking at location number one, it sounds like.
Yep.
What the authorities recommend.
Yes, it is.
I think that could jeopardize the value of the Nolte Road parcel.
Or you mean Nistley Road?
For development.
Or Nistley Road parcel. Nolte Ridge Park.
Nolte Road's everything there. You see between where it says Nistley Road and that light shaded area. Which we were trying to mark at one point.
Yeah, I think you were on the board at that point too when we were trying to, aren't you? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I believe that the other site adjacent to the sod farm is better, given the constraints that we intend to keep on this sod farm. So that anything recreational would not be exposure to whatever is ever deemed. Toxic from cell towers to occasionally useful as opposed to continual residence.
So you're saying you prefer proposed location number two or one at this point?
I guess it's number two, yeah, it's. What's before us there in. The, yes, right there. That's where I thought. Seemed to be a better location.
I'd say, do we need an actual answer on the location tonight, or do you just look for whether we're in favor of it?
So under the lease. Four Seasons Golf Club requires. The township's. For during commercial development that would occur. So we're looking for at least township's support for commercial development at either.
I think the board, and I want to speak for everyone else, is definitely in favor of that. If we're going to choose between one and two, I think our board, rather than waste all their time, we need to have a frank discussion about whether we're ever going to sell that Nistley Road parcel. And if we're not, that's really shouldn't be in consideration.
But if you got, if you got from us tonight that we're favorable to something occurring at one of these two locations, would that be enough to move forward right now?
It opens up, it allows us to move forward with the next step, which is finalizing the leasing. Liberty Towers and.
How about we just take that first step right now, just saying that we're okay with it without necessarily saying one or two.
Okay, well, I agree with what Scott said. The, the other comment I'd have has to do with. I believe that with the creation of Recreation Authority, we've empowered the authority to make the decision about. Where the, where the, the tower should be. I think that's their purview. I, I think. We want to be sure that we're supportive of, of whatever action that they take. And I think that should be, that should be your focus, rather than, rather than deciding here amongst ourselves. Location one or location two. The Recreation Authority should be doing that, in, in my view. And this is nothing more than, I don't want to say rubber stamp, but just, you know, a blessing. From the, the board to allow the Recreation Commission to move forward with. Their decision, decision making process.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking to take a motion right now, just saying we're fairly supportive of this at this point.
With, and so I'm clear, the discretion to where it would be would be left to the rep.
I, I think there will still be a little bit of discussion, but it's proposed location number one, because there is a planned township project at that location too. So at that point, there's going to need to be a little mutual discussion if that's the route they. Decide to go, because there actually is the need for a flood. Control basin, that's actually a planned project for the township, just hasn't gotten to the top of our list yet.
That white gray area for proposed one, is that golf course property, or is that?
That's golf course.
That's not Nistley Road.
The, the Nistley Road track is the dark green, immediately west of it.
Okay, very well.
Yeah, well, it was just a refresher of our buddy's memory was. The low, the development of that track from Nistley Road was actually kind of financed the building of that flood control basin. And they were going to also incorporate that as their stormwater control for Nistley Road track site. Basically make the basin about twice as large. That's what it would need to be for that site to be developed. And it ended up encompassing pretty much the whole area that Mr. Madonna talked about, that whole light gray area. Was proposed to be a basin. At the time. It was going to be a pretty significant basin.
Yeah.
Yeah, so with our discussion, the motion is authorized staff and engineer to. Motion is to support the request of the Recreation Authority to work with Liberty Power to move forward with plans to build a macro cell tower on the golf course. Property. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
And I forgot to ask, is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak? Anybody, Diane, on your end?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. So seeing that, we have a motion from Mr. Bennett, who was the second? Mr. LaFever, Ms. Switzer, please pull the board.
Mr. Weaver.
Aye.
Mr. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. LaFever.
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth.
Aye.
Mr. Russell.
Aye, the eyes satisfied, nothing.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This time there's no one left other than township employees and the secretary on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. We've, we've put them all to sleep. Okay, next up we have the facility ground lease motion and the motion is authorized signature of the man ground lease between the township and the Central Recreation Authority extending the term from five years to ten years.
That's essentially what it is. We have a ground lease with the authority, rec authority right now for five years. The sublease that we're proposing for blue collar hospitality is ten years. So our solicitor felt that that should be changed in the ground lease, which is what you have it for you.
Okay, so accelerating the meeting, is there any discussion of the board? Okay, so accelerating the meeting. Is there any discussion of the board at this point? Okay, seeing none, the motion is authorized signature on the main ground lease between the township and the Central Recreation Authority extending the term from five years to 10 years. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Question from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. Next up is facility sublease to Blue Collar Hospitality LLC for restaurant facilities and banquet space. And the motion is to authorize signature on the sublease agreement between Blue Collar Hospitality LLC and the Easthamfield Township Recreation Authority and the township for sublease to the banquet and snack bar facilities for Four Seasons Golf Course. Ms. Switzer?
So we have been negotiating, the authority has been negotiating with Blue Collar Hospitality. They have created a lease with the assistance of one of the the subcommittee of the Recreation Authority and the solicitor, Mr. McCorrelli, and this is the sublease that you had before you. And as you can see, the Blue Collar Hospitality has signed off the lease. So they're on board. Next step is the board of board of supervisors, and then it will be signed by the rec authority when they meet.
And and we're going to talk about the next item, too, which would be the the food services.
Concession.
This is for the first year and year two through four, $6,000 a month, and then goes to $7,500, and then five through 10, $8,000 per month. So a pretty significant number by the last five years, we're looking at almost $100,000 a year, roughly.
Just so you're aware, the initial budget for the golf course for next year is showing we had to contribute about $325,000 to close out 2020. The 2021 budget looks like we may only need to supplement them by $25,000. Considerable savings if this goes through.
This is a long way, desired goal of mine. Mr. Bennett, do you have anything you wish to add?
This this should get the wheels turning on the whole process at the at the golf course and moving in the in the direction that we all hoped it would.
This is a monumental occasion, so I will entertain a motion to signature on a sublease agreement between Blue Collar Hospitality LLC, the Hemphill Recreation Authority and township for sublease of the banquet and snack bar facilities that Four Seasons Golf Course.
So moved.
Motion from Mr. Bennett and a second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. Next up is the, it's going to be a motion to authorize signature for concessions agreement, which provides for Blue Collar Hospitality's use of the Four Seasons Golf Course liquor license. Ms. Switzer, you want to explain that real quick?
So essentially, this is provides for the use of our liquor license. We do need to get this reviewed by LCB. So this might have some different versions as we move forward, but as you can see, Blue Collar has also signed this one. Again, follow the same process, the rec authority will sign as well as the board supervisors. And essentially turns the management of the lease over to Blue Collar Hospitality.
And how much of a loss each year were we roughly running on our our food services that this is going to be?
Generally $85,000.
Was that?
Generally $85,000.
Right. So between these two agreements, we're looking at changing the bottom line of the golf course in the range of $150,000 to $200,000 on any given year, which was actually one of the original goals of what we were going here with creating the authority.
Right.
So, Mr. Bennett, do you have anything you want to add, or?
No, the only thing that I'd add is we're we're doing all this and and keep in mind that we still have a potential lease for a cell tower out there to 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 offset some of the costs of operation also. The other thing I'd point out is we'd be securing a separate monthly payment from from Blue Collar for this situation. So additional, additional income.
But the the rec authorities to be commended for getting us here finally. This has been a 10-year process that's finally got to the point where we're we're doing something, and that's kind of making the golf course run more on the business now. Hats off to the Recreation Authority.
I would echo that, and I would also thank Mr. Bennett for serving on that authority as well. And the word monumental is appropriate here for this. I know passports have struggled with this, and I think we're leaving future boards in good position to keep this open space, to keep it recreation space, to keep it a golf course, and allow for us to do different recreational activities in open space with those other parcels. So monumental is the right word. It is a good day for Easthamfield that this is finally happening. So, thank you, Mr. Bennett.
So with that, I have authored a motion to authorize signature on a concession agreement, which provides for Blue Collar Hospitality LLC's use of Four Seasons Golf Liquor License.
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. Next up, we have Penn Legacy Soccer Club. And I'll read the motion. The motion is authorized use of a hair park for soccer tournaments to be held October 10th, 11th, November 20, 21st, and 22nd, December 5th, 6, 12, 13th, 20th, 2020. And to authorize the chairman to sign the roadway indemnification form for the above dates and the for the following roadways, junction, lits, Graystone, and Lansville Roads for modified soccer tournaments to be held across Lancaster County. Ms. Garber, do you have anything you wish to add?
No, the same guidelines remain as in in effect now as were in effect for the one that you previously agreed to. Single parent and or other bystander for each athlete, so crowds are significantly down. Their primary concern is the indemnification for the constables on the roadways. But they gave us all the dates they'd be using our parks just so that everything was covered.
These groups over the years have gotten their process pretty good at this point, the running these events. It's kind of seamlessly now. Any discussion of the board? The motion's on the floor. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion from Mr. Weaver. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing.
Mr. Chairman, if we could jump up to the trash and recycling bid.
Okay. Oh, sorry. So we skipped over the trash and recycling bid. We're going to discuss a warrant to contract to Low Bitter Waste Industries. Ms. Switzer?
So we had the bid opening. We were very pleased with the results. You can see on the spreadsheet our current cost to the waste industries, $120.20. We had three, three bidders, four bidders, one no bid. And Waste Industries came in significantly less than the other bidders at $117.36 per unit. Our budget preliminarily, we showed $130 per unit, so we're in very good stead. I can't tell you how much, if anything, we have to increase our trash rates, but with that bid opening, that's very good.
And we had raised our rates, what, about 12%?
12% last year with anticipation of doing it again this year because of the bidding.
We might have a much more significantly smaller increase than what you had been thinking that we're going to do budget-wise for
Correct.
for next year, which is all good news.
Yep.
So the motion on the table is to accept a low bid of $117.36 per unit, right?
Correct.
From Waste Industries of Pennsylvania LLC, a GFL Environmental, an authorized signature of the contract when necessary documentation has been received from the contract. So is there any discussion of the board?
What's the contract length on this?
The length is three years with an option for two more years.
Okay, thank you.
And our current one was just three years, and our current contract declined the options.
Correct. Yeah, there is no change in in the provider, but he did decline the extensions.
Who gets the recyclables?
We pay for the recyclables.
Okay.
We took a little bit of our uncertainty out by taking that on.
That's the trend now in waste.
Okay, any discussion of the board? And there's a motion on the floor for this. Do I have a, here a motion?
So moved.
Question from Mr. Wigglesworth. Is there a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. Okay, now back onto the agenda. We have the revised website proposal authorization to enter into contract to create a new website with the bulk of the costs in the 2021 budget year. Ms. Switzer?
So the admin finance committee charged the staff to look at updating the website, which we've done. We went back to the committee. They are recommending, and we are, staff is recommending, using ReVise. We currently use Civic Plus, and you can see in the spreadsheet that their costs to upgrade and change are significant. We also looked at Town Web, but we liked the revised version better. You can also see, hopefully, you've been able to get on some of those sites, Exter Township, Tinley Park, and New Hanover are their customers. They are very flexible in their financing of this, and they could start the project this year. It takes 12 to 17 to 23 weeks to get it accomplished. We're hoping to start it this year and then have it go live sometime in the spring. And the bulk of the cost, of course, would be in 2021.
Can you put a real quick one-minute synopsis of some of the upgrades from our current website, what they're proposing? When you get in the spot, but.
Yeah, you are. Not really. I I I think the the search function, the ability, the number of clicks you have to get to something will be much improved. On the backend, the the content management part of that will be easier for staff to manage and update more frequently.
Will it have video capability?
Yes, the one we have now does also. Yeah.
This is a little bit more of a refreshing, more intuitive, kind of ways to describe it, Tim.
Yeah, the whole look will be refreshed. The layout will be refreshed. Ease of access. People these days don't like to click through things, and our current website, you have to do that, gets you there, but it's kind of convoluted. So this will improve that.
Any discussion of the board? Okay, the motion is authorized to township manager enter into contract to accept a website design from ReVise and not to exceed the cost of $16,500 with the contract written to assume the majority of the costs in the 2021 budget. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Question from Mr. Bennett. Do I have a second? Second from the chair. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing.
Thank you.
Next up, we have, I'll read the motion and then we'll explain it. Motion is authorized staff to distribute a $200 check to each full-time employee employed as of October 7th, 2020, recognition of the dividend distribution for Sussman Trust represents low worker compensation claims. The the board remembers historically, every every so often, we get a dividend from our workers' compensation based off of the number of claims, and we have typically in past years passed on about half of that dividend on to the employees. And I think that $200 represents about half of that dividend, as I see Ms. Switzer nodding her head.
Yes.
It's a good feel-good gesture to our staff. The fact that we get dividends is reflective of rather low incidence of injuries, which is what we want our staff doing. And so it's just a nice little little bonus that that gets issued out around Thanksgiving, Christmas time, so that's what's before the board tonight. Okay, any discussion? I see none. Motion is authorized staff to distribute $200 check to each full-time employee in recognition of the dividend distribution for Sussman Trust represents low workers' compensation claims. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Any motion from Mr. LaFever? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Wigglesworth. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. Next up, we have vehicles authorization to advertise, ascend, next group of vehicles, five in total, to auction, a 2013 Dodge Charger, three 2016 Ford Utilities, and a 2006 Chevy Express. Ms. Switzer?
So this is the second grouping and the last for this year that we are selling to auction in tune with the ex, yeah, and new enterprise, I'm sorry, the Enterprise Fleet program that you had approved earlier this year. We got very good results from the first batch of sales. We generated $33,000 from that, which is above and beyond what they had anticipated. So they're doing what they told us they would do. It's still early in the process, but eventually we will show you on a spreadsheet what what everything has come out and how we're doing with that. But this is the second set final for the year.
Okay. Any discussion of the board? Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is anybody making that motion?
So moved.
Question from Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Weaver. Ms. Switzer, please poll the board.
Mr. Weaver?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
Mr. LaFever?
Aye.
Mr. Wigglesworth?
Aye.
Mr. Russell?
Aye, the ayes have a five nothing. And that includes our action items. Moving on to all business, LIMC invite to a future meeting. Ms. Switzer?
So the board asked some questions at the, maybe this, two meetings ago. We went, I went back to LIMC representatives. They provided you with an invitation, some information, as well as their last set of minutes. I would encourage you to attend their next meeting, which I'm not sure when it is.
October 14, 7:30 a.m., Millersville Borough Meeting Room.
Thank you. Just to see how they operate, I think you'll see a difference, particularly if you went to them before. I I did hear from, at our cog meeting, we did discuss it, and I got feedback from Mannheim Township. They are looking at it quite seriously and feel that they would most likely be adjoining LIMC in the future. East Pete didn't give me a whole lot of feedback. They, she was taking it to her board to further discuss. The cog did did say that at this point that there's still, they feel there's still value in holding our cog or our five-member cog. That could change in the future, but at this point, they still would like to continue with the Central Lancaster County cog, which we are also, we are currently a part of.
Any discussion of the board? February 14th is.
Okay.
I guess, would there be a Zoom, too, for that?
I don't know. I know when it was at East or West Hemphill that he did. I think it's up to the each municipality. I I can check with Millersville Borough, see if they're willing. I think they have the setup for it.
And usually that gets better, then it's going to get better as an option.
Yeah.
Especially if you're coming from Camp Hill.
I will check.
Okay, new business. We have nothing on the agenda unless somebody wishes to add it at this point.
Yes. Two meetings ago, we were advised that Dutch Valley Auto Works withdrew their application for a new building expansion and a lot add-on because they did not want the anticipated future cost of curb and sidewalk. And Mr. Wigglesworth initiated a request by the board that we might look into this and see if we couldn't find a solution. Not having heard one, I I looked into this a bit myself physically on site. I think it highly unlikely Penn Dot will ever put curb and sidewalk on Columbia Avenue. And anything that would require or generate curb and sidewalk on Richardson Drive would be probably a mega project encompassing everything there, including acquisition of Dutch Valley to make it feasible. So I am proposing that we might have a note on the plan for approval deferring curb and sidewalk as long as Dutch Valley is the owner of that project. They are a small business in East Hemphill. They have been here a long time. We consider and do a lot in ordinances for others. We consider and do a lot in ordinances for others, and I think we should consider this or a similar solution to allow Dutch Valley to move on and facilitate their business operation.
Did we reach back out to them?
I just got an email today, Mr. McCollum is interested in meeting with the board or members of the board, just need to know when and where.
Yes, Seth, with the planning working group.
Very well, will do.
Thank you.
So if I'm hearing someone needs to facilitate a meeting.
Yeah, we will, if he's willing, it sounds like he's willing to meet with us, we'll get a meeting with the planning group and we'll hear his concerns. Well, entertain your wise counsel.
I also am thinking of many cliches I won't share about when you have something and you continue to talk about it, it never gets done. We have been talking a long time about managing or withdrawing conditional use applications, and we have been talking for a long time, longer time, I believe, about sign ordinances. I would like this board to pass a moratorium on either of those two actions until we get those matters in place. If we do not, I suspect we will not get done what we want to get done on those issues before we have issues we don't want to go in a way that we believe is not right for East Hemfield Township.
I don't know if we can, I understand where you're going with that. Actually, I have a reserved comment, I gotta think about how I respond to that.
I'd like to hear what council has to say on that, but I know the general tenor where you're going with it, Mr. LaFever, and I would propose maybe setting a hard date, and perhaps you and somebody else leading a committee to get this done by that time. You know, whatever it, I agree it needs to move, and I'm with you on it, I, I can't wait till we get conditional uses out of the ordinance, but I don't know if a moratorium is the right way to go, and.
If we do a moratorium, it puts us on pressure to get it done.
Understand.
I, I just, this is a way of desperation, if you will, but we need to, we need to get her done.
How about, before we do the moratorium, we just challenge staff to come up with a schedule?
We have talked about it, planning staff, and we, we, the planning staff doesn't have the time to devote to two of these in one year. So I've asked John to prepare an RFP to go out, and we can include both of them. It was originally for the signage, but we can certainly do both, and then just get it done.
Is that just going to be staff and consultant and taking it back to the, the board, or are you going to actually try and do a working group, and we're also doing a map update on top of it all right now?
Is this something our engineer could do without doing an RFP?
He could, he could.
I would prefer our engineer doing it at this point.
We can do that.
Somebody else new into the township.
All right, I think it would be cheaper, quicker.
Could you get a quote from our engineer?
Sure.
Scope and a fee for, for the board's consideration?
Yep.
But, moving along there, Mr. LaFever. Any other new business? Nine, nine twenty.
I'd like to throw one more thing in here right now, as it's getting late, but the discussion tonight about the golf course and the track along Nissley Road, I do think it would be worthwhile for us to put it on an agenda at some point. Doesn't have to be next meeting, or, but at some point, we should have a discussion about what the will of the board is with that track, take a hard look at it, and decide what we want to do, because my feeling is that what was originally expected from that track has changed over the years. We've got significant feedback from the residents about preserving open space, we own that property. I think it's an opportunity for us to show the community that we hear them, and make it actionable for the future, so. Again, it doesn't have to be at the next meeting, and we don't have to spend a lot of time on it tonight, but I would like to get it on the agenda at some point to have that discussion.
Well, I'll be honest with you, right now, if there's any people online right now, let's have an initial discussion. Let's talk about what people's thoughts are for that track and land, I can, I'll give a little history real quick, a quick history lesson, it'll take two and a minute or less. Two thousand ten, we looked to sell that track of land for residential development. Was proposed by Mark Seivers, our two planning directors ago, to upscale that to more of a higher density. It went out and was extremely unpopular with the, the residents immediately around there. This room was packed, I think, Mr. LaFever, you were there at that time, too.
I don't remember that one.
Okay, then that was before, just before you came on the board, then, when we were first doing that part. We had the room packed, I think you came on board once we had the offer in hand that we declined at that point. So, extremely unpopular, the residents. We were a little tone deaf in how we presented it, and, and timing also was very poor because we were just coming out of the recession. We had some bad budget issues going on, and there was a perception that was put out, claimed by a former board member from a while back, that we were doing that to just balance the budget, which wasn't the case at all, it was just bad timing. Really bad timing.
Detailed memory.
Of, of that, but needless to say, the, the offer came in, it was significantly lower than what had been praised pre-two thousand eight, and the board at that time decided to basically decline the offer and, and kind of leave the status quo as is. Fast forward, obviously, the township has gone through a lot of development, there's definitely a sentiment among the township, majority of the township residents now to kind of slow things down. And like Mr. Wigglesworth said, we do own the property. I think one thing that I've been thinking about with that track of land for a while now is, given the issues that Orstown has as a fire department about even being able to get out of the facility with where they're located at, and down the road, depending on where our fire, where, where it's not Fire Service May, whoever our new Fire Services Group Commission is called, might be coming up with ideas, that would really be a very central location in the township for a future combined facility of some sort for public safety.
Was, was that two thousand ten proposal for high density?
Medium.
Medium density?
Yeah, we've been, it might be, wasn't it true high density, but it was small lot, smaller lot than what's around it.
What, the primary objection might have been that it didn't coincide with adjacent residential lot sizes and things.
That, and it's just a general, we're against any type of development in our backyard.
But what about the water authority wells consideration, we've always brought up when we talk about that track?
Well, there's, there's no wells at that location. We did look at Don, the big stormwater basin, which we, we talk about every year as a township, but we haven't gotten to that level, but that would be a prime location to address a lot of the flooding that occurs in the Mill Creek area across Church Street and then the golf course. That would be, that's basically the uplands of all that, there's a significant flow that comes from Gloucester, from that street and that area that goes through this, or Nissley Road Track, goes on to the golf course, and then works its way down to the, the Hark and underneath Church Street, and that's the area, the most prone area in all towns of the flood, and so there was a desire to, as part of that, to address that, and that's actually in the MS four work groups docket, too, is, that's one of the areas where we were planning on doing some floods as well as MS four.
Since the board didn't grasp my idea of a large sports resort complex, including Four Seasons, the rec center, and everything else, and it, it is a track that probably should get used, so I, I tend to agree. Finds, find the right use for it.
Well, you know, I, I agree with the point Scott's making about the property that, that the township owns, and ultimately, it is our responsibility to see that it's used wisely, but again, we have created the Recreation Authority to plan and execute whatever development that goes on in, in these areas, and save a public safety use where obviously we would maybe step in and direct how a property would be used, and I really think we should, that, that should be their, their, their focus. And I think we should, within reason, we should, we should support whatever planning and, and, and execution goes on in these areas by, by the Recreation Commission.
Anything I'll push back is that, that track of land was not on the charge of the Recreation Commission when we first wanted it. The Nolt Road Track and basically the Nolt Road Track and the Golf Course is zone resident, or zone recreational, but that track is zone residential. That one still falls on our board to make decisions one way or the other, and that's not to say we can't make it a public track, but right now it's zone residential. It's not, it's not recreational, it's zone, we need to, if we're going to turn it over to the Recreational Authority, then it needs to be, we need to change the zoning to recreational or something, so I think.
Well, I don't think we need to change any zoning until we figure out how, how we want to use it, though.
So that's what I'm saying, so right now, this one still falls on us, this is not really, it's not, it's not a recreational track right now, it, it was, it's, it's still set up to be developed unless we, as a board, change that.
Well, along the lines of what Mr. Bennett was just saying, I, I mean, I would be open for it to become part of, of that recreational, I guess, three tracks, the golf course, the this, or the Nolt Track and the Nissley Road Track. I just think, I guess, the purpose of this discussion is for us to get on the page, like, do we want to keep it? Because for me, practically, I don't, I don't think it should be developed, and I guess that's what I wanted to.
Well, if, if we don't develop it, then, if we don't plan and develop it, we should rezone it. And get, because we're paying, we're paying a higher property tax because it's zone residential right now.
I agree.
Because it's basically planned for development, and that's not the same thing as open public space would be, so that's.
And I, and I thought Nissley was part of the package, but, but that's, you know, I guess, it's not, it's not.
We actually minimized our exposure there, that is in cleaning green.
All the more reason to resign, because then we pay tax penalty on it if we were to develop it.
Correct, well, somebody would have to pay that, yes, the back.
I mean, is, I guess, of a general perspective, is there any willingness of the board to sell it right now? I'm probably not in that camp at this point.
Not now, I'm out.
And there's actually two parcels, there's a seventeen acre parcel and a four point nine acre parcel.
Right, the four point nine acre parcel is a swamp. So I think, Mr. Wigglesworth, you kind of have your, your answer at this point, I really don't think there's a will of the board. I do think maybe we got our official map going on, and maybe we could talk about that track of land a little bit, our official maps, as there's two recreational authority members on the rec, on the, on the map committee, too, as well as myself and Mr. Bennett, with him wearing two hats. We could talk about that track a little bit more, I would encourage public safety to give it a little bit of thought. If you were to look on the map right now, that's dead center of the township, it's a good north-south route to both two eighty-three and Route Thirty. It gets around the most congested areas of the township. Centerville is, other than Centerville South, is not a congested corridor. And with the State Road and Centerville Road projects, it will become a high-speed north-south corridor, which would make a really good location in the future for some sort of facility. So I think there'd be something to give some thought about that from a public safety perspective. Is that?
Discussion.
Is that good, everybody, we're kind of on the same page at that point?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we will handle it, Ms. Switzer and Mr. Beck, we can bring that into our comp plan discussions about the long-term use of that track. Okay, moving on to managers' report, group reports, Ms. Switzer.
You have my report before you, it's fairly extensive, I did want to point out, I think I have it highlighted, that the let date for Centerville has moved to the fall due to right-of-way acquisition, I don't know if anyone has any other questions?
When's the ribbon cutting going to be for State Road at this point? So if they let that in the fall, that will probably be December twenty twenty-one, start work for Centerville.
It'll start in December?
Yeah, it usually takes about two months to get a contractor under contract. So with it being mid-September, mid, we're looking at October, mid, like just before Thanksgiving. If you want the contractor, we'd probably be giving those to proceed.
There hasn't been any discussions about ribbon cutting for State Road.
It's looking like, right now, you have a completion schedule for August twenty-first, twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, does that look like it's still on schedule?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, we should not have projects overlapping at this point?
No, no, we're in good shape there, the intersection of Yellowstone is Yellowstone, Yellow Goose is coming online, that should be starting soon. That was the missing key at, at a point in time.
Okay, so no, biggest concern there was those projects overlapping, and it looks like we have a good four months spacing between when State Road is complete and when Centerville would start then.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on the manager's report?
Well, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the subject of roadways, Farmingdale Road, I see some notes here that Penn Dot is mandating some additional upgrades, the signal flashing, and driveway and utility information is being added. My, my concern here is that there's going to be some substantial additional costs concerning Farmingdale Road, the long-term project. Mrs. Switzer, what, what do we have that project budgeted for right now?
So with changes to the intersection at Marietta, which is now a full reconstruction, we're at nine hundred and sixty thousand dollar estimate. Our current balance in that fund is eight hundred and fifty-two thousand in rough numbers. But we also have some improvement money, road improvement money, from a Good Drive project that we can add two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to it. So we're just over a million dollars toward that project. We are also looking for grant funding, we were turned down with, for Green Light Go, but we do have an, they call it an Arlie grant, don't ask me what that stands for. Scott probably knows, so we're waiting to hear about that one.
I'm Matt Redlight Enforcement from Philadelphia.
So I, I think in terms of money-wise, we're in good shape.
Good shape? Okay.
We should be able to fund that.
And why I look at, I mean, it's a pain that Penn Dot's doing that, but that signal's, hardware's got to be at least twenty years old anyway, so it's not, we're not replacing new stuff at this point.
Right.
In many ways, there's something to be said to not do it piecemeal and just upgrade the whole intersection, so that's kind of what Penn Dot looks like they're making us do now.
Well, again, my concern is how, how it would impact our, our budget and, and funding. But it seems like we're in pretty good shape, so that's, that's the good news.
Yes.
What about timing?
Timing, he, he intends to submit the second HOP round to Penn Dot, hopefully get approval for that one. They had their first crack at it. As soon as that's approved, then we can get the bid specs together, contact the property owners, get the rights away.
And we, we talked to the, the corner property, that we're doing the biggest impact on Marietta, have we had any discussions with them yet?
We haven't had, talked to anybody yet. I shouldn't say that, that's the business owner.
That's business.
We did initially have conversations with him, he was aware of what was occurring.
Because that's the most impacted of all the properties, is that one.
Yes, that was, that was quite a few months ago, we did, did have that discussion.
I would encourage us to have the discussion sooner or later, so it doesn't bog down the project, that's what slowed up Centerville.
Yeah, he has, he's, Chris Bowers is planning on, on getting that information, he needs to get me what right-of-way he needs, and then we'll get a list together.
Maybe just don't want to go down the, the road of Centerville and where you get delayed a whole year because of property owners and utilities?
Yes. And I fully intend, once I get the listed properties to, uh, and list Dan Tech to, uh, work us through that project to keep us on course.
Is it possible that this construction could actually start in the spring? Or is that too optimistic?
What do you think, Scott?
I don't see why, I, I thought I was hoping even sooner.
I mean, no, I'm just with the.
It'd be nice to have this be a winter bid and contractor select and breaking ground like as soon as the and we can and early in March. It'd be kind of nice.
Yeah.
Paving plans open in April, so.
It's a good project for a contractor. You'd think they would jump at it.
If we get a winter bid too, we'll usually get, that's usually the very beginning of the bid cycle. So okay, a little bit, a little bit better bid than we did later in the spring. It'd just be nice to sort of keep these projects moving, these road projects. And then we're meeting as a public works group to discuss a couple of projects too, right?
Yes, end of the month.
And that's gonna include, uh, Stony Battery and Marietta.
That list is, is growing. It's gonna include Stony Battery and Marietta, a concept plan, a concept plan for Community Way. Also, we got the water, water Walk Works Grant for twenty thousand. So we want to review that project, the sidewalks on Main Street in Landisville. We want to explain the, the road, the bids, the roads we want to bid. I think that's it at this point.
I think.
But yeah, a lot to discuss.
Perspective, we have to give a lot of attention to Marietta and Stony Battery, especially with stuff occurs in the West Hemfield side too now.
Right, right.
I mean, that's quickly gonna start becoming one of our most congested intersections. I mean, it's not the level of Rovers Town at this point, um, nor Centerville, but it's becoming a close third.
And the key to that, that concept plan working is gaining that donated land from the Staufler property.
And then we're also, the other thing we're talking about on, from the public work side is gonna be how we handle sidewalks in the future. That was everything thrown our agenda. We should be coming back with a, a game plan on how we handle sidewalks that a butt Penn Dot right-of-way, where it's a lot more expensive on the homeowners than
Yes.
other locations.
Right.
If I may, if I could make one more comment, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't thank and commend Mrs. Switzer on the way she's handled this unexpectedly complex pickleball situation in the township. It's, uh, been pretty challenging for everyone and, uh, both she and staff have done, I, I think, a great job to this point. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, it's always a human element to everything we it's black and white, then becomes gray when you have a public meeting. Okay, anything else for the manager?
No.
Okay, I see no one for public comment, right, Ms. Garber? As I see you smiling, shaking your head, no. Okay. So with nothing for public comment, it is now about realistically, it's twenty of ten and we're going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you, everyone, for how you guys all handled.